February 26th, council meeting. We call the order. Would you please stand to the political leaders and send them on their side.
My political leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without God, equal and just. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes for the February 14th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the minutes if you're ready.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes. Would the clerk please call roll?
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Staff?
Yes.
Next item will be statement of bill paid in amount of $306,584.61.
Make your motion to accept the statement of bill in amount of $306,584.61. Second?
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll?
K R?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Staff?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be request for comments from the court. If they're being done, next item would be consider recommendation of project completion and acceptance by the planning commission of the planning Sustainable Places Connecting Edwardsville Plan. That's a mountain. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, before I turn it over to our planning consultants, I'll just recap how we got here today. If you'll remember, in late 2016, the council approved use of funds out of the Economic Development Fund to move forward with the planning Sustainable Places Connecting Edwardsville Study. Those funds were spent out of the Economic Development Fund in May of last year. This was a result of several meetings between the planning consultants, city staff, and a group of citizen public engagement that they're going to go over. It's almost an online public engagement. This was before the planning commission at their last meeting where the group recommended unanimously to approve, or excuse me, accept that essentially the planning consultants had met the scope of the project as was stipulated in the contract. So, that's all this action does tonight because of incorporating into the comprehensive plan. That'll probably be taken up on this year. What you're doing is receiving updates from the plan, from our planning consultants, what they've developed for us, and making the motion that they have satisfied the scope of the duty. I'll turn it over to our planning consultants.
Please take your name and address. Well, you don't have to give your address. Take your name.
I'm Randy Gordon with P H C Roads Engineers. Certainly appreciate your time tonight. With me are the other two key members of the consultant team, Marty Schukert with RDG Planning and Daniel Serto with Insight Planning. All three of us will cover kind of, I think, what you consider the highlights of the final product based on what we heard from a wide range of stakeholders for this project. Again, very briefly to make sure anybody forgot or was not aware of the kind of the original key purposes and objectives to be satisfied as part of this planning process. Certainly wanted to examine the existing market conditions, just what is it economically that shapes development in this specific area and affects what you see come before you and maybe some things that aren't quite so viable. We wanted to look at the transportation network to identify any items that seem to be candidates for improvements, again, to support the overall goals of the study. We wanted to make sure that this built upon the earlier planning work that was done as part of the K-32 corridor multimodal study as well as the follow-on railroad quiet zone effort that, given by government, has subsequently moved on. And then we certainly want to provide some type of conceptual budgeting that, once the city is ready to enact any of the recommendations, they at least have some idea of what program for who we have. We've made a prior presentation in the city council as was as planning commission in early in November. We covered those topics, which is a lot of the background and certainly the market analysis that had been done prior to that, just to again, identify what opportunities the market seems to support in Edwardsville. And then we went through some of the options and feedback we'd received at that point. And then tonight, the main point is just to go over, make sure you get the highlights of as we listen to all of that input, the things that seem to be kind of rise to the top. And then based on those key objectives and priorities that we heard from the community, we have since put together some conceptual drawings to kind of flesh out, we think, some strategies that could achieve and address those goals the community stated. And then we'll go a little bit in terms of what the recommendations were in the report and some general implementation ideas. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Serto. He, one of his primary duties was looking at the integration of public input and engagement as part of the project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, privileged to be here tonight. I want to talk about the key goals and how we addressed them over the scope of the project. The first that was identified was improving Edwardsville's sense of place and community image. And the way we approached that was by looking at the existing features and how future development can complement and really strengthen the fabric that's there. There are a lot of technical challenges with the traffic handling. There are key connectivity challenges that I'll talk about more in a moment. But we really started with the idea of how could specific infrastructure improvements improve the character of Edwardsville? Its marketability as a place, its recognition as a destination, and specifically the marketability of the properties within the vicinity of the intersection of 4th and K-32. So we identified as the strongest feature, the fact that you have existing landmarks like the old bank building, the post office in the campaign, but it's diminished by basically the degree of emptiness and lack of supporting development that's around it right now. The market study, just to sort of 30-second overview of what that encompassed, trying to identify what are the primary opportunities that are realistic and feasible in terms of future development within this corridor? And specifically, one element of the market study based on the community engagement efforts that we undertook, feedback from stakeholders as well as some feedback to the public through social media, was to look at what is the feasibility of attracting new restaurant and retail businesses near this interchange? So the strength there that the market study identified is that you have a very strong daytime workforce population in the immediate vicinity, very short either walk or drive, five to 15 minutes. The challenge is, however, that that intersection is within a much larger trade area, larger market area, that includes both primary market in the immediate vicinity and secondary and tertiary markets. And what that really translates into is the opportunity that exists here has to recognize the competition that exists a little further out, whether it's from Village West and eventually Village South as those developments come together, but even from the broader metropolitan area, including some of the market down into Johnson County and Shawnee. The reality is that one of your strengths there in terms of connectivity, highway access to those K-32 and 135 also makes those areas a very short commute, a very short distance to reach for people to go and shop and enjoy restaurants and other sorts of features. So the challenge there is there's lots of competition that at some level diminishes the opportunity here, but we still think, and Marty Schukert will talk in a little more detail about it, there are some niche opportunities for development in this area. The central focus of the study, of course, was on improving pedestrian connectivity within the area as well as other forms of multimodal transportation, including vehicular circulation as well as thinking about the interplay between those different modes, pedestrians, bicycles, autos, and the railroad itself. You've all seen, I'm sure, lots of information about the Quiet Zone study. Part of what we did was we took the recommendations of that study, wove them into some engineering and conceptual urban design concepts about how the interchange could be improved to improve connectivity. And again, the key strength there is that you have a large residential population south of the railroad, off Fourth Street, of everybody from the children to adults to the elderly, who actually are walking in this area. But of course, the deficit that you're all aware of is that the practical infrastructure, the sidewalks, the trails and the pathways for people to travel on particularly by foot or by bicycle really aren't adequate for that purpose. There are traffic concerns, there are safety concerns that arise from both of those, and the physical barrier and the nature of the railroad itself is a really significant obstacle. We also looked at housing as part of the market study, and we did identify that there is some opportunity here to increase new choices for both middle and upper income housing there. Again, Marty's going to talk in more detail about this, but just in terms of broad strokes, greatest feature is that there is potential demand, sustainable demand for that type of housing nearby, in part because not all of that demand is met locally within Edwardsville. But the challenge is there is the availability of land for development through those purposes. Again, there is a concept here on the north side of K-32 that Marty will talk about in a little more detail. And finally, the last piece in a little more detail, coordinated the railroad quiet zone improvements with city preferences. The strength is, you know, the real purpose of quiet zone improvements is to simultaneously improve safety while reducing the nuisance of the trains having to blow their warning signals as they cross. We went out, Randy and I went out of the field at various points during the study, and very intimidating especially to be on foot near the trains when they pass at 50, 60 miles an hour. The degree of infrastructure improvement that's going to be required, as you know, is pretty significant. The cost is relatively significant. But again, the benefit is potentially that you'll have a much safer crossing that can then be navigated both by automobiles more safely as well as people walking and by bicycle. There are access changes, however, that are going to have to be incorporated. I know there are a lot of different ideas that are being discussed right now that involve negotiation discussion with the railroad as well as with the U G staff who are involved in the study at their end. But what we did in this conceptual approach that we took, and Marty will talk in a little more detail about this, is we looked at how could you make those improvements, the infrastructure that are necessary for connectivity and for safety around the quiet zone, and simultaneously possibly improve access into and around some of the property, particularly the area we're calling the enterprise zone, which is the property south of K-32 to the west of Fourth Street. So there are going to have to be some challenging changes that are made at some cost, but again, we do think that there's a significant opportunity to undertake that. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Marty Schukert.
Thanks, Daniel. I'm Marty Schukert of RDG Planning and Design. Good to be with you tonight, and I hope we'll be giving you some ideas you'll find exciting and interesting as well. First of all, when you think about a program or a development direction for a crossroads like Fourth and K-32 and the area around it, we think about three things, or three forces that are talking to us. One is, what do the people tell us is important. And as Randy was mentioning, that deals with connectivity, with being able to get across K-32, with kids being able to get to school, with feeling that that road and the railroad paralleling is not as much of a barrier. And that, of course, is what gives this study its name. Secondly is what the markets tell us, what the economics tell us. And what that tells us is that the likelihood of a big supermarket is not very great, the numbers just aren't there, but there are significant opportunities. And finally, what does the context tell us? What's worked, what hasn't, what can we build on in the corridor that's already strong? So we have tried to, through the process that Daniel and Randy described, a pretty extensive community participation and a good deal of give and take, come up with ideas that we think will be helpful in terms of connecting Edwardsville and building what we call an opportunity community. That is a place that gives new opportunities for people to live, new opportunities for people to work, and to invest in and start businesses. So from an overall land use and development point of view, we have looked at a couple of different development concepts that are related, they're very closely related to each other. And the one that we really have landed on is one that considers three different development areas, one being the, whoop, I always say that because I don't know what the laser button is. One that deals with the main crossroads at Fourth and K-32 as a mixed-use zone with some commercial development that maintains and builds on the strong points and resources that are already there. The bank, the post office business, the building, the Fourth Street Cafe, the convenience store, which is a significant center for the community as well, and builds on those things, eliminates some functional problems like the driveway that's too close to the intersection, and works with those kinds of resources. Secondly, looking at the industrial and enterprise development that's happened in the corridor along K-32 West and says, that is telling us something. That's a good market, a market that we generally in cities and metropolitan areas don't cater to very well. We don't have places where somebody can start a cabinet store, build a metal building in a setting that has a certain quality and character to it. So the enterprise corridor addresses that issue. Thirdly, how can you start a business and maybe find a place to live in the same community? And so that involves what we call the residential tier, residential opportunities in the study area as well. So in this concept, we show an initial development phase that looks at all of these different issues, maintains the railroad property as it is, as open space, and then builds new commercial buildings, industrial and workshop buildings, and housing on sites that are vacant but could be developed to the benefit of these different dimensions of the community. There are functional issues as well. The idea of building a vocal connecting street that serves what we hope will be an emerging enterprise corridor, that reduces the amount of service vehicles and turning traffic off of K-32 and puts that on the inside rather than the outside, that connects the community by developing trails that serve the needs of businesses located in the area, that connect them to the crossroads, and that break the K-32 barrier by again providing connectivity up into surrounding residential areas as well. So by looking at this development area as a unified area that provides places to shop, that provide areas for community quality, that provide areas for new enterprise, and provide areas for living, we can develop an area that is connected, number one, and number two, that's unique in Edwardsville. It is not trying to be a quaint sort of new development area like, say, Lennox's Building or that builds on an historic Main Street setting. We don't have those kinds of things, but it doesn't mean we can't build something great here. So here you see the second phase of that property became developable, of developing flex buildings on the south side of our connecting road. A little bit of a word of the specific areas. At the Fourth Street Crossroads, this is the key place where the community connects together from north to south, also from east to west. The concept of the Crossroads District or the Crossroads Area is to keep most of our existing resources in place, to develop through infill, to make this intersection a gateway, a real feature that welcomes people and marks a milestone along K-32 that in fact says Edwardsville. To provide pedestrian connectivity throughout so that that barrier and those barriers like mainly K-32 and the railroad become less significant, and that develop the less-used parts and quadrants of this intersection for new development that can take advantage of the people who are in the area, who are coming to the area, both in terms of being residents, being workers who are working in the industrial park, and are coming as visitors to Village South and Speedway as well. So the plan for the gateway crossroads looks something like this. The buildings in orange are the existing buildings, the buildings in red are new projects. Two concepts for new development include a unified development on the southeast corner that incorporates a park along Fourth Street, makes the creek a significant part of the overall development area, and creates a project that uses a good natural environment or an interesting natural environment, links together and brings us back to the main Fourth Street corridor. It also looks at the northeast quadrant of the intersection as a multi-tenant project with parking oriented to the north to Edwardsville Drive and Fourth Street North that creates a better pedestrian crossing at grade, but also has the promise maybe in the future of a great separation of pedestrian overpass that provides much more efficient parking and circulation for existing buildings and creates, where we now have a driveway that doesn't function very well, rather an opportunity for a monument that announces arrival in Edwardsville and that expands the parking inventory substantially in the area around. So some earlier versions of what that could look like, and then a little bit more developed model, three-dimensional rendering of a vision for how the Fourth and K-32 crossroads could realistically develop. So the road system that leads into our enterprise zone, a possible new opportunity for storefronts south of the Fourth Street Cafe, the existing bank, a better parking lot, good pedestrian access across the street along with sidewalk, with continuous sidewalks, and easy to cross street, partially because we're able to develop a median with quiet zone development, a park that leads down to the possibility of outdoor dining off the street, a pedestrian overpass. Again, all things that are within the numbers that we can support in Edwardsville, but create a different kind of environment that is character that we think is consistent with the character of the community. Now looking from the south, the medians both help define the quiet zone, but also make it a lot easier pedestrians to get across the street, so connectivity is east to west as well, with the overpasses or the possibility of an overpass, but primarily surface, high disability crosswalks that get people to the other side. In a real way, defining activity and development is the best way of bridging the gap of making this area more comfortable for people to get across. These are some concepts for gateway icon, the projects that were done by our art studio over the years, that all reflect some story or image of the place that they're in. In Corralville, Iowa, the corals which was found in fossil form, as this was once, as was much of the Midwest, underwater, under ocean, those coral fossils gave this suburb of Iowa City its name, and the limestone of the monument reflects that. Looking at Ames, Iowa, at the Iowa Department of Transportation, which is the I dot Iowa DOT's headquarters, at a freeway stop, looking at icons and lighted features that reflect transportation, Tree of Life in South Omaha, Nebraska, common, a symbol common to the various ethnicities that have lived there. So a feature that is consistent with the stories of Edwardsville. A pedestrian bridge, if that's ever built, could be iconic as well. So very graceful structure that's around Memorial Park in Omaha that probably cost $65,000 to build, but that was also $19.65. Recently rehabilitated for its 50th anniversary. The High Trestle Trail, the Skydance Bridge in Oklahoma City, all examples of things that can be done with lighting and with relatively simple and elegant structures. From a connectivity point of view, the road network that connects back to K-32 that leads into the next development district, the enterprise zone. In that enterprise corridor, we see this as a space for innovation, for new business starts, for entrepreneurial development, as with the Crossroads District. We build on rather than replace the existing structures with infill development, build a circulation system that serves that with a new service road, creates a high amenity setting for new businesses to start. So here we're looking at the service road. Again, here the existing buildings are, instructions are in the lighter color, new concepts in the purple, and show how this area can grow and develop with infill development on sites that are currently not occupied. All a way of creating opportunities, buildings and spaces which can generate new enterprise, new jobs, and new residents. The residential tier looks at forms of housing developed voluntarily over the long run that can provide opportunities for new homes to become established. We envision these sites as being equity, housing owner occupied, that can reinforce the development in of non-residential forms. So for example, south of the tracks, higher density, small lot, urban housing, great places for younger families to live in with small lot, single-family development beyond that. North of K-32, a much more conventional development form with connectivity, again, that makes this school-related, so that there are paths that climb up and use the topography and come up to Edwardsville Elementary School. A good family-friendly feature of this kind of a neighborhood is taking advantage of the school, not having to cross the highway to get to school, even though we want to make that easier to do as well. The result in total agreement is a community that's more connected, that is a place where one can shop, live and work, start a business, make a life, take advantage of the opportunities that we think Edwardsville presents. So Randy's going to finish up here by telling us what he recommends.
Yeah, indeed. So basically, so bottom line, as we wrap up the study, ultimately the whole purpose is so that we can give you some suggestions. And a lot of it, it's not so much we're giving them to you, it's more, here's what we heard, and I think if you follow that through a economically viable, right, I mean, if you look at new business, they're going to look at the same market numbers that we did as part of this. So we're trying to give you something that's realistic from the market perspective, the private sector, because they're going to make the investment. What the city needs to decide is from a policy perspective, is you need to make some adjustments and certainly what guidance do you want to give anyone that comes in to make application for development here in Edwardsville? So again, first of all, we're going to reiterate it one more time. We are not advocating really change much of anything in terms of existing businesses. The point we're trying to make is the businesses that are there, for the most part, they're meeting an existing need and they're staying in business, so they're viable from that perspective. There's just opportunities to add to them and kind of infill around them to make the space even better rather than require existing businesses to close, move, things like that. But again, Fourth and K-32 is an existing major crossroads. It's a landmark location for Edwardsville, and so it only makes sense, based on what we heard, to try and do some things there to really enhance the image, and there's space to do it, whether it's city-led or private development. With that, there's opportunities for properties that are currently unused or very underutilized and for other reasons potentially related to the quiet zone or other improvements may in fact be made ready for redevelopment for that reason, is to take those and come up with something that I think could be a significant upgrade for the community, both in terms of what you can offer your residents, but also the in terms of what you can offer your residents, but also the attractiveness for visitors. Certainly, again, I think we can take advantage of some of the natural features that are there and leverage those as attractive features rather than something we merely have to manage and minimize when we construct something new. And I think finally, we want to reinforce anytime you have new development, whether it's per this plan or anywhere else in town, the question should always be what kind of connections and pedestrian bicycle facilities are appropriate in this location. That doesn't mean you have to do everything everywhere, but I think it is very important to look at what makes sense in these locations to try and build the links within the community. The northeast corner, currently other than a giant antenna, is certainly available for development. It does have some site challenges from a traffic access perspective. There is some terrain issues on that parcel, depending on what you want to do, but there are certainly options and opportunities that that parcel has. One thing we would certainly expect is some extensive discussions with whoever's actually laying out a specific development there to try and achieve what they can without creating undue issues for the community at large, especially from a traffic perspective. And certainly, we see there's some opportunities for residential development. Again, we see those as private market-led, but again, we want to point out this seems like it's certainly something that could meet some unmet and existing demand in the community for residential. And again, connectivity. And one of the comments we got from the planning commission when we showed them basically the study recommendations, this seemed to be the thing that resonated the most, and this may be the one part of what you see before you that is probably the highest in terms of a candidate for a public investment to make happen, and that's in terms of some type of a street north of the railroad to serve those properties, but also to keep K-32 as a really good corridor for moving folks into Edwardsville and let them go where they need to go without complicating the traffic and creating issues from having too many driveways when you add development here. Adding this kind of a rear street really promotes local access while maintaining safety on the thoroughfare route for K-32. Again, the quiet zone study seems to be moving forward based on what we've heard from unified government. There are certainly some benefits to those types of improvements at the at-grade crossing there on Fourth Street. We wanted to make sure that we can show you a plan moving forward. If those in fact happen, that it can actually be built upon and enhanced even further. And again, we want to, we recognize this is not all going to happen at once. It's going to happen parcel by parcel and location by location, but this plan, I think, illustrates a way to allow that to happen while it can still work together. And in the end, I think you can come up with something much better maybe than we're starting with. And again, any of those developments, look at ways to enhance connectivity for the community. Extension of 104th Street West or Fourth, Edwardsville Drive to tie into something is certainly an option that should be considered. If anybody is in fact, wanting to start building development here by decree cannot fail. In the study, there's a list of some obvious potential actions that can be taken to start achieving these specific goals, and we break them down between things the city would be most likely to make happen, but there's certainly other entities involved. Again, we talked about this being the private party, the private sector-led for development. We've identified those things. And there are third parties that can have a role in helping making these happen, whether it's Y.D.C., just kind of marketing properties, funding through KOD, Mid-America Regional Council to help make these things in particular happen, unified government, United, or Union Central Railroad, all of these entities certainly have a role here as well. This is not only the city of Edwardsville, but at some point in the future, when the opportunity presents itself, what we hope is the study provides you some guidance and some things to do when you're ready to move ahead to support that. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Just so you know, once you say yep, you've met your obligation, what we'll do is provide bound copies as well as electronic copies for the city to have on file. As Zach pointed out, this does not essentially become an official planning document or policy document, but it is information that staff, planning commission, and obviously the governing body can take into consideration in the future if you decide that you in fact do want to take some policy action, whether it's part of the comp plan, zoning ordinance, anything else, applications for funding, all of those things moving forward. So with that, any questions? I know, you saw this, you could have given a press.
I did, I just saw this last week and man, it's just as exciting now as it was. Well, no, so with what you're talking about here, so do you see that it is generally a city-led, it's kind of a chicken and egg type deal? Is it a city-led project that generally kicks things off? And second question is how do we get current businesses that are operating and that are remaining open? How do we get them to buy into this? Is there an incentive package? Is there, have you seen things that would, you know, is there discounts on property tax that would allow them to invest in a building that would meet the design standards that we're looking for to move this?
Sure, that will take them in order. So the first thing is in terms of public-led versus some other party, private-led.
Or Alberland.
Yeah, for statute, the state kind of cut down on cities' abilities to condemn and acquire, well, to condemn property for developer purposes for a lot of reasons. So for one thing, with that in mind, plus the political dynamic, normally most cities aren't going to acquire property, combine them, and then sell them off to a developer for several reasons. What we see here, probably the thing most likely to be city-led is probably public investments, such as the street. There's some things you can absolutely do on Fourth Street with an existing driveway. It is, you're right, a chicken and egg thing, but we have pretty good examples here in the metro of some good public investments that can trigger because it creates activity and enhancements and, you know, the world goes around in the development community because people see the potential. And when you can see, you can show them a better product, they see better possibilities for them to attract people from a spin-on. So I think there is some public initiatives that can be done to start making this happen, but I still think for the most part probably follows into your second question. What you can do is show the possibilities, you just need to start creating the spark so people can see the potential. And then those who believe in that enough and that other people are going to see what things can become, and they see the city is behind it, then they're going to start investing because they think I can buy now when things are more reasonable, more economical in terms of property, and then either improve it and sell it for a better price and a good return on their investment, or they're just actually going to develop it for their own use because again, they see the potential. You certainly have incentives that are available for some things, and here again, it depends on what you want to allow. Short of tips in some of the other districts, you're getting down into more of your basic investment credits that businesses can have, which are not to be disparaged, but that's really up to you what you want to allow.
Would a C粒 apply? Could you put a C粒 district that would affect that?
I think same, yes, that's what I thought you could.
You certainly, there are several different. And that is a cap of 2%?
Right. Yeah, you have several choices if you want to, in terms of funding, those improvements, both for construction and maintenance, and CID would allow you to do both. And there's other districts depending on what you want to accomplish. If it's funding to construct, benefit district, basic benefit district works and some other things. It's all a matter of how folks are willing to pay for it.
Yeah, I'm saying more of what Chuck is talking about. What incentives do we put out there to attract it? Because I don't see that a developer is going to come along and say, wow, this is a good idea without that incentive, knowing what the incentives are, and how do we structure that that makes it more palatable to us and to the developer?
And to piggyback off that, I'm thinking, I'm talking about the existing businesses that we have that would reinvest in their community. And you know, that's what I'm talking about, and not so much. I think you've got to start it at home, at your grassroots, and it may start, you know, we've talked about city hall building, we've talked about public works location, police department, fire station, maybe that's the kickoff, that's the city portion that starts the ball rolling in the right direction. So that was just one other thought. And then something that I'm asked, I've been asked, been here my whole life, how, why do you think, and this is kind of open to anybody, that we can't support a restaurant? And the cafe, I mean, God bless them, I hope they stay there forever, but how many in the last 20 years have went through that little space? Is it parking that's the issue? Is it, you know, is it accessibility? Is it too small? All of those things. We had the restaurants, a couple of them connected here, right, here in the parking lot. And is it not the amount of expendable cash on our citizens, you know, that are to go meet, you know, go to restaurants? I don't know. I'm trying. It seems like we should be able to support a restaurant, a good.
One of the comments that I heard years ago was, and you maybe either agree with it or disagree with it, that the railroad tracks are a barrier. For whatever reason, this, there's a perception of crossing the railroad tracks to get to a restaurant on this side.
And you know, maybe some kind of the double net, but you know what, there's a whole, I would say the majority of our residents are on the south on railroad tracks.
Yeah, the market study, yeah. That's what we did, the market analysis as part of this, that was such a big deal.
So, okay, well, I'll attempt that and I'll get to my other.
All right. So let me take a crack at this. The market study says yes, there is support for a restaurant, maybe two, and that's part of the reason why one doesn't succeed. And of course, you, they may do very well, you know, if people like it, it seems to be doing well, and the better it does, the more likely it is to attract another restaurant which will be better for everyone. But there's clearly support for it, both from the local population, from the regional population, and from the commuter, the people coming in into town. So we know that the support for it is there. Now, the hypothesis about why doesn't, why has it been hard to occupy that space, it's a variety of things. It might be in the past, the space itself, the nature of the restaurants that are in there, but mainly the fact that it's all by itself, that restaurants do better when they have company, because then an area becomes established as a district with a little bit more of a destination. The second issue in addition to the fact that there's only one and it's in a small space, is that the environment around it isn't really a developed one. So there's not necessarily a feature at that intersection, a public investment, an open space, a gathering space that's marking it as a landmark. So it's basically a place that you can go by too fast. So I think that the recipe for success is first of all for people locally to support the restaurant that's there and to hope it do well, but also to create aspects of the public environment that make not just the railroad, but the road more crossable, make the intersection a little bit more memorable, make it more of a place which can then create an environment that causes another little business to open up. Again, I think the key is ultimately at the intersection, a public investment or a group of public investments, not necessarily gigantic ones, that sort of tame the intersection, that make it a little bit more of a place and that create a setting in which a couple of those other sites that are now empty, be developed. So connectivity, the connection, the bridgeability of K-32 and the railroad are really kind of fundamental, I think, to taking advantage of the market that we think is there.
Okay. That answers my next question.
And it's no one of those things you can't force somebody to come in.
Yeah, no, you create an opportunity.
Somebody's got to see the potential and they have the resources.
I personally believe that it's going to take a restaurant that, unique in caliber.
Agreed.
That is something that is not your everyday, just sit-down-type restaurant. I think it's going to have to be, and what I mean by that is sort of themed, why you would drive to Edwardsville to go to, whatever, we could put it on the northeast corner, call it Tower Plaza, but.
But you might want to change that.
Cutting through, good. But a, but you know, something unique that is going to, why people would come here. There's a lot of, you know what, Fourth Street Cafe in Riverside, people go a long ways to go there and eat breakfast and eat there because it's something unique. It's not just, so I'd like to see our own Fourth Street Cafe in this area where people on Friday night don't automatically, or Saturday night, don't automatically just say, we're heading to Legends to go eat. There's a nice good restaurant in Edwardsville where we can go eat. And ourselves tax the.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to figure out how to get in and out.
Now, Maga Place, when it was open, was pretty successful. It was because the guy who had run a restaurant, he really did it. And when he left, the business left.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So if you talk to another operator like that, it's going to be hard to do.
Yeah, you're totally right. It needs to be a special place, and if it is, then it takes advantage of some of the huge amount of activity that's going on three miles.
Yeah, you know, I think of a Gaston's down on the river, you know, that overhopes the river. Is it something that, you know, that does something different that no one else has that we could, so.
Yeah, exactly. That's easier said than done.
Yeah.
But you create, yeah, you create the place or opportunity that makes somebody creative say, oh, well, that's pretty interesting, nobody is there, that's an opportunity.
Well, it makes it easier for us to go to YDE or to a potential developer with the market study in hand that says we have done the numbers and it will support X, you know, and.
Let me give you an example because it just came to mind, that bridge that I showed in one of the slides, it's about the blue light, so not the big one, no point in the city, but the one in, that's in rural Iowa. It's miles from, well, it's not miles from nowhere, but it's 25 miles from Des Moines. That bridge, just the color of it and the nature of it and so forth, has created a little bit of a restaurant boom in a town two miles away down the trail called Magu. And the restaurant and bar in there is basically a kind of Johnny Depp concept, it does huge business. And it's nowhere, I mean, it's really way out in the country, but that feature, that place, and not that you should build that, but that place creates the market that attracts people. It creates something that brings people to it, feels good, attracts business, and creates an opportunity for prosperity in a place that, you know, privately didn't have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have you done collaboration with that K-32 study, that Tri-City K-35? Have that been collaborated together and kind of worked into this plan? My whole problem, or the thing that I think could be a problem on this whole situation is this highway is nothing more than a fly.
is this highway is nothing more than a fly-through. And that's what we're trying to stop. And I understand, I might be a little bit slow on saying that, but if we don't get the cooperation on that end and that end, we're still going to be stuck in a little, it could be just right there anyway.
Yeah, and the K-32 study obviously was looking at a much longer section of K-32. It did look specifically acknowledge this is kind of a unique place within that overall corridor. They didn't drill down to kind of the level of resolution that we did as part of this study. I think we're fine in terms of kind of not getting in each other's way, not agreeing. And I think the topic you bring up of K-32 and the fact that vehicles move so quick, they, you know, they don't have time to notice Edwardsville. That was discussed with KOD, the speed limit, things like that. Not saying it's impossible, the speed limit can be dropped, but there's some other things that can be done, I would say, more within your control. Because K-32 is chaos. And you may have limited success convincing them, but a lower speed limit meets what they need to do. But I think there are some things that you can do that, again, will help address that concern you bring up, which is, they just don't really notice because they're moving so quick.
Which, I've been on Abaco's lower, the speed limit, you know, from west end to town all the way through, you know, 45 miles now, because it's so congested here within the last five or 10 years. But you can probably take the traffic down to really see the increase of it.
Well, the one thing that we don't want to forget is while that has issues associated with it, let's face it, from a private development perspective, traffic is an important factor.
If you can slow down.
And so, and that's why, as Marty said, I think you don't want to keep people from coming. What we're doing is wanting to stay.
One of your diagrams of the intersection, one of your drawings had all cars. There wasn't a truck going down.
Right.
And we talked, yeah, we changed that. That, my staff member did the rendering, made it attractive to have cars.
It was a lot of cars. There wasn't any. If you looked even closer, there wasn't even stoplights.
Yeah, or the crossing gates, there are a few things that need to be reinforced.
I'm not trying to be critical, because this is a beautiful presentation that you've got here.
And part of it is, there are a lot of trucks. But it's, as a percentage of what really is there, it's not, there aren't that many trucks. But there are trucks. And that's part of what KOD's going to bear in mind with whatever they decide to do. And again, truck drivers spend money too, especially local truck drivers.
But they've got to find a place to park when they get off.
Correct.
Which is.
And some of what's there now.
Is congested a lot more.
This hodgepodge, it's very inefficient, the parking. And again, that was one of the things that I, maybe that's kind of once the local existing businesses get out of it, the city can come up with a plan to kind of consolidate and improve, then, well, they could definitely get something out of it. Because ease of access in and out does play in the mind, especially of repeat customers. And that's what we're talking about here, right? It's the folks who live here, work here, those are your repeat business, that's your base for success. And more easy, more.
You've got to have somebody at night, knows that people are coming at night, or the truck drivers don't come in.
Right.
A good parking lot, I mean, a good parking situation there with a little bit of infill development would go a long way toward, I mean, it sounds funny, but it would go a long way toward improving the business environment, as opposed to not exactly knowing where you're supposed to go or seeing dirt or gravel or parking lots. Just sort of thinking about that area as a, that little area that's already developed on the southwest corner as more of a developed district, as more of a, not a Main Street district, because it isn't that. But, but, but something that actually functions and is clear to use and makes sense would really go a long way.
Well, and I totally agree with you. You know, if you're going 45, 55, or 65, there's not a reason to stop here. Right?
Absolutely.
So just like what you're saying, you know, a reason for you to pull in here, to stop and stay.
That'll slow you down.
Right, right. I mean, if you know that you're pulling up on, you know, where you want a destination, I mean, we're all smart enough, I would think, that you'd start slowing down before you, you know, you don't go 65 and then say, oh, I'm going to turn right. You know, so, but anyway, I like that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
I did have one quick question about the, on page 39, I think a couple of times you mentioned extending the trail under the railroad tracks. And since you brought it up again with the business side of it, it's sometimes a deterrent for people wanting to access those businesses. Had you thought anything about, if you were going to do a trail under the railroad, making that wide enough for vehicles, which would be helpful for emergency vehicles as well?
Yeah, and specifically, I want to flip back.
They call it below-grade crossing.
And so predominantly, what that was looking at, almost there, was at Mission Creek where it goes underneath. And from a, basically available room, it's fairly straightforward to try and get a trail underneath within the channel.
Yeah.
There's some issues, especially just because Mission Creek is going to come up, and the amount of widening starts getting really expensive, just because of the railroad tracks and increasing the span for the tracks themselves. I, we did look very, very, very early on at options for trying to provide some type of a separated crossing so that trains never held you up. But we even looked at, you know, going over the railroad and how would that all fit together once upon a time. I mean, $20 million, you're all set. Maybe 15, but that's, and that's the outside, is no matter what you do to achieve that, you're talking significant cost, but it's happening other places. And so it's, for the community to decide how big of a priority that is for you, if that is a major priority, we can help you start to identify, what are your most economical options to create that very thing, so that you don't have to worry about police, fire, ambulance detouring? Because like Wednesday night of the planning, three trains went by within five minutes in different directions. And so if you weren't just right, you're sitting there for a long time at a crossing gate.
I've seen those below-grade crossings in Littleton, Colorado, they're awesome, but they're, again, expensive, just huge. And I don't know what Olafah paid for that one, if they, they don't have a below-grade, they've got an over-the-top something.
They elevated the railroad to go over.
They elevated, but the, interestingly, you mention that because we just finished Olafah's downtown plan. And, you know, that railroad is elevated and out of the way. But the other one that crosses Santa Fe downtown is a real problem. And there's, and there's no easy way to elevate that because the connection still works. So the brilliant idea that we propose, quote unquote, is actually to use the property, that city property along the railroad, and take one of the streets, wind it, and take it underneath and then back up on the other side parallel to the railroad. So that, so that it would actually go parallel to the railroad, but drop down, go under the tracks, and then come back up the other way. So that effectively, if you went through, you would make that kind of movement. Because what's happening there is that there is a great separation, a couple of blocks north of Santa Fe, but it goes through local streets, neighborhood streets. It too is out of the way, this way we could actually design something that worked. But it's a, it is a real, it's a real problem with the creek to get underneath. On the other hand, the ramping is as bad going down as it is going up, so.
Yeah, for a car, you can, you get down low enough a lot faster than it would to get it up and over.
Yeah.
And then you've got a truck traffic going across and like that too here, so.
Yeah, well, and then overpass has to go 23 feet up to the air, so that's, that takes a lot of ram.
From pure dollars under, it's probably cheaper for the city. With all of the trade-offs that are part of that, but it would be much cheaper than going up and over the railroad and coming back down eventually. Probably less destructive in terms of the number of properties that would be affected if we went up and over as opposed to some type of an underpass.
So is that underpass for trailing feasible?
This one is relatively simple, just because we're only docking an eight or 10 foot by trail within an existing creek. We just kind of perch it up on the side of the trail. And we recognize when it rains a lot, you probably better not use the trail when it's closed.
That happens a lot.
Yeah, we, yeah, those are pretty common down around here. But it's still pretty nice, you know, 350 days out of the year, 360 days out of the year.
Well, the people that are currently crossing over there is what I think, they're not on that west end. They're not crossing to go to that west end of that development. They're crossing to go to Dollar General and to the convenience store.
Right.
And which is on the, which is on the east end. Now, I'm not saying that that couldn't, that 4th and couldn't happen, you know, that area couldn't happen as development, if it did move west, but.
It almost becomes more of a recreational.
Right, right. But hiking bike trail.
Hiking bike trail.
Yeah, but if that's in there, you actually have quite a nice little loop there adjacent to residential area and business if you want to go there. And it's pretty much off the street. We saw bicyclists going down the edge of K-32 and trucks just sitting by them. Now, that's a, that's a hardcore bicyclist that are comfortable in that, but kids are not going to be.
It's worse to see a wheelchair near that.
And you do see that.
Going to Dollar General, yeah, we see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they really just don't have any good options right now.
Little souped-up, little souped-up rascals.
Handle a lot better, no doubt about it. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to help with this. We've got some excellent input, and again, I'll give Zach credit, he did a great job sharing information with the public and getting way more feedback than we normally would expect. And in the process of him doing it instead of us, it saves some money for the city, which is a double win.
You said you were going to make bound copies, will each councilman have a bound copy?
Yep, there's certainly going to be plenty.
I for sure have one.
Yeah, they'll be giving you bound copies, we give you plus PDFs so that can be put on the website archived for the future, so. You can allocate those copies however you'd like.
There will be.
We'd like to have a copy full on his name.
Sure.
So we're wrapped up with discussion, it's all been great, but, so. The ultimate motion that would be before the.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you about, the motion.
So what the motion would be, would be to approve the recommendation of the planning commission and accept the connecting Edwardsville plan and fulfillment of the project scope and deliverable for the project contract.
You don't have to repeat the motion if you don't want to, just say.
So what we're doing is making the, we're accepting, the motion's going to just say that they've fulfilled what we asked them to do, or that's, that's it.
Correct.
Well, okay, I guess I'll do it. How are you doing? Okay, I recommend make a motion to accept the completion and acceptance by the planning commission of the planning sustainable places connecting Edwardsville plan.
Second?
It has been moved in second, it to accept the project completion and acceptance of the planning commission for the planning sustainable places connection Edwardville plan. Would the clerk please call the rule?
KR?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Did a lot of work. Yeah, I'm sure there is, has heard this before, but it's still, still an exciting concept. Okay, next item will be consider update regarding existing land lease between the City of Edwardsville and the Union Pacific Railroad.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is just, we were, okay, there's no official action to be taken at this point, but this was recently brought up to the city's attention. We have three active land leases with Union Pacific Railroad. One of those was originally drafted in 1985. It was a 25-year land lease, meaning it technically expired in 2010. We originally paid $300 for the land and have been using it as what's known as Pacific, excuse me.
Pacific.
Yeah, Pacific Street. Since that time, the railroad recently recatled, said that they've discovered that the leasing has expired, and they proposed new terms, which would include a $4,500 annual lease with a 3% increase built into their original proposal. There are some complications with that, being that's a kind of a testicle to swallow for that road. It provides no direct access for any of the streets off of it. The folks who live off of Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street, they usually take Newton. And also, as the previous topic mentioned, the quiet zone does appear to be moving forward, and the current plan for that calls for closing of that entire section off of Fourth Street. So again, this is really just for information to keep you guys glued in on the developments that were on our end. We will probably bring an official staff recommendation after we continue engaging the sections of the railroad.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, move on to the next item of the advisory course. It's up to you again now.
Not a whole lot, I just want to let you guys know what's on the docket for the next meeting. So we'll probably have a work session beginning at either 6:00 or 6:30, depending what we squeeze in. And we are timed for departmental year-end reviews for 2017. So that'll be the March 12th meeting. Also on that meeting, we will have before you, a recommendation from the planning commission to approve a revised final plan for the ZEDX project, as well as a, possibly any special event application from 40KC at the Futzall Courts. Later on in the month, we'll probably have, or we will probably, will definitely have a suggested update to the city's comprehensive plan that the planning commission recently had pulled in here. That's it, you guys have got to expect in the month of March.
Thank you.
Chief Massey? Zach Solone, that will be presenting our year-end report next meetings, we're excited about that. Lot of activity continues. We are about three or four weeks already ahead of even last year in our activity accounts already. Our newest officer, Hayden Dirks, has started his first day at the police academy, 14 weeks of academy training, and another 14 weeks of field training when he returns. So he'll be ready next year. But that's what we've been up to, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief Whitaker?
Thank you, sir. Tammy?
Nothing.
Nothing? Dave? Councilmembers, are we going to start with you?
I really don't have much tonight, just thanks to the things, zoning department, all the work they've done, and the guys that presented the new ideas and projects, that was a lot.
I'm not trying to be cute, because I know I'm not. Is there going to be something done with the city park on the mole infestation?
We're looking into strategies for that.
When you figure out how to do that, let me know.
I think it's more than a mole, I think it's a groundhog.
The groundhog, okay. We can talk about that later.
We won't make any comments about groundhogs.
Also, Tammy, I think, you mentioned the fooshball court. I think the gate latch, I think, is broken on that fooshball court. The lass that holds the gate shut. It looks like, yeah, it looks like somebody cut it off with a cord or something. That's all I have.
Margaret?
I don't have anything further to connect, so.